Welcome to, welcome to the October meeting of the Hamlet City Council. We're glad to see everyone here tonight. Meeting is open at this time and we will ask that Pastor Ricky Jacobs come forward and give us our invocation tonight. Thank you for being here.
Let us pray. Kind most gracious heavenly Father, we love you tonight and we thank you for what you've done for us today. Lord, we pray that you'll keep us the rest of this day, heavenly Father, in your loving, tender care to your heavenly Father. I pray tonight for this meeting, dear God, that your will be done, dear Lord Jesus, and you'll bless this fine city, fine city council, dear God, and the fine members of this city, dear God, and those that work with this city, dear God. Because, Lord Jesus, the Bible said, except you build a house, we all labor in vain. So, Lord, we put them within your hands, dear God, and we trust that you will lead and guide them, dear heavenly Father. We pray that you will protect them, heavenly Father, and we pray, dear Lord Jesus, that they'll always be mindful of you. We pray for those that, second Baptist, that whenever seized, dear God, to help others, that you'll give them a great time, heavenly Father, because they're part of this city. You'll give them traveling grace there, dear heavenly Father, and traveling grace back and keep them safe. So, Lord, bless tonight, have thine own way. We love you, in the holy name of Jesus Christ, we pray that will be done. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, you have before you at this time item number three, the adoption of the agenda. And if you'll refer to item number twenty, closed session, we're going to add A four to that, which is economic development discussion. I need a motion at this time.
Mayor, if you will, I would like to have the, discuss the potential contract with Hamlet EMS taken off of the agenda. We already talked about that, say we were going to approach that in March with our budget plan. And I don't know what we would be doing in between.
What's the feeling of the rest of the council on that?
Just to make sure I'm on, we've just about got a draft contract worked out, although we're not contemplating having the city enter into the contract at this time. The idea is, is that once it's entered into, it will be for the next budget year. So, this was really just to give you an opportunity to ask me and the manager questions about it.
Okay. Because I knew we talked about it, say we were going to stuff that in the upcoming budget meeting.
Yeah, no, we're not asking council to adopt anything at this time or even in the very short term.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McQueen. Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second with the changes to A, A four added to item twenty. We'll also leave in the discussion on the Hamlet EMS contract too. We'll leave that in there. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Also, at this time, need to make a note that Councilman Pressler is excused tonight. He had another meeting he had to attend in Mount Gillian. Moving along to item number four, we have before us special minute meetings from August the 11th, regular, let's see, special meeting from September the 8th, and then our regular enclosed session minutes for September the 8th. And I trust everyone's had an opportunity to look those over and what are your wishes?
So, move to adopt August 11th, September 8th, special meeting and its regular closed session minutes as presented.
Have a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Are there any comments or changes or deletions that need to be made on that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Likewise. Okay, item number five, we have at this time reached our point in the session where we allow anyone who is here tonight that does not have anything on the agenda that would like to say something to the city council to please come forward and have your say. We'd be glad to have you up there. If not, I'll close comments at this time. Moving along to item number six, we're pleased to have with us tonight Mr. Dominic Boyd with NCDOT. He's going to be talking to us about Richmond County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We're glad to have you with us tonight, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Just coming to you with a little bit of information, I've been working on the Richmond County Comprehensive Transportation Plan for about two years now, and we're starting to come on the back half of doing a comprehensive transportation plan. So, what I have for you is some of the draft CTP maps that me and, well, the Richmond County Steering Committee and I have been working on. So, I'm just talking to you, this is information, this is not a voting item. It's pretty much some information and feedback if you have for me. I'm going to go through the presentation and at the end I'll have my contact information if you have anything that might be missing from the maps that I might not know. Starting with the presentation, overview of a CTP, it's a recommendation plan or needs list. It's not fiscally constrained, so it means no money tied to it. It's developed cooperatively with local stakeholders, Lumber River RPO, NCDOT Transportation Planning Branch, and Division Eight. It's a multimodal plan comprised of the elements of highway, public transportation, and rail, bicycle, and pedestrian, and also coordinates with our local land use plans and also community and statewide goals. It is not a promise to build projects, but it is an important first step in obtaining them. And adoption and endorsement happens at three levels. First at the local level, which is city or county, the regional level, which is our RPOs, and then after that state level, which is NCDOT. The municipalities will adopt within their jurisdiction and endorse the remainder of the plan. So, as we have in front of us, this is the actual Richmond County plan. Why develop a CTP? Helps to reduce costs associated with right of way and construction activities, will help to minimize impacts to the natural and human environment, also can be used as a guide for future development and transportation decisions. The CTP can be amended or updated as long as all parties agree. And any requests for updates or amendments of the CTP, you'll have to go through the Lumber River RPO. I have Ms. Janet Robertson of Lumber River RPO, so that'll be your point of contact. And her actual information will be on the backside of the presentation. Where does a CTP fit in the big picture? Recommendations from the CTP are included into the project prioritization and then considered for the Transportation Improvement Program. A little bit about the TIP, it's a 10-year planning document and funding schedule that's fiscally constrained. And then a little bit about the CTP again, it's a, it has 25 to 30-year time span to it, and it's not fiscally constrained. So, the two big differences, the TIP has money tied to it, the CTP does not. Typical CTP schedule, so you initially start with your base year or current year data. From there, moving forward, analyze the data, the base year data, project it forward 30 years to the future years. So, our base year for the CTP is 2010, project it forward to the year 2040. From there, you analyze any deficiencies in the future year because, of course, projecting it forward would just show a hyperinflation of any issues that are going on. So, you analyze deficiencies, develop alternatives for those deficiencies, and then from there, you'll create the maps that are needed, which we're at right now is the recommendation and plan. From there, we have the adoption of the plan. So, the next time I actually be coming back to you guys, we'll be seeking adoption for the finalized form of the CTP maps and the problem statements. I'm going to stop real quick. In between recommendations and adoption, we'll actually have a public comment period, which has started. During this time period, we'll actually have two public drop-in sessions, at least two public drop-in sessions for the public, so they can get a chance to make comments also on the CTP maps. So, this way, we're more inclusive of everybody. Moving back forward, after adoption, the CTP will be produced, which is a technical report, can be around 100 pages or so. So, we'll have that. Then after that, it'll be corridor protection and programming. In coordination with the CTP process, we have our coordinated authorities, Lumber River RPO, Richmond County, City of Rockingham, City of Hamlet, which that's the type of course, Town of Dobbin's Height, Town of Hoffman, Town of Ellerby, Town of Norman, and also the Richmond County CTP Steering Committee, which Marcus has definitely played a great part of, and I'm appreciative to have him with me on the Steering Committee. Next slide. What we have is the CTP context. So, you have my, my current supervisor, James Upchurch, his information, his email address and phone number. Also, you have my email address and phone number, and also Mrs. Janet Robertson, her email address and phone number. And what you have in front of you, like I said again, are the draft CTP maps for information. When you get a chance, you can go through them, go ahead and analyze them, see if there are anything that is missing recommendation wise. Also, I'm also giving you guys a recommendation list that'll go along with the maps. And so, as I'm pulling up the maps, let me just go through some of them real quick.
Mr. Boyd, is there anything you can go to map that you want to bring up?
You can just go to Highway One if you want to, and you can just scroll through the rest of them. So, the initial county highway map, I'm sorry. As you can see, it's a pretty busy map overall, but we do have inset. But this is our draft highway CTP map. As you can see, it's overall county, and what we do have, as you can see, the boxes are around the various areas. As you go into the map, the next page will be the inset and breakout of each town and city, so you can get a better idea of some of the projects that's going on, or excuse me, the recommendations that we have on the CTP maps. And then from there, we'll have the public transportation and rail map, also your bicycle map, and then your pedestrian map, which also has inset of some of the areas. So, again, you can go through this, you'll have a good amount of time to go through. If you see anything, contact me through email or phone, or you can contact Ms. Janet, or also my supervisor. Or also, if you have any information, you can give it to Marcus too, and Marcus will actually tell me too. That's all I have for you guys.
Question for Mr. Boyd?
I've got something, but I'll get with you later, so you can kind of...
If any of you have any other ideas or additional areas that might be good to focus on as far as...
There's actually just a recommended area on here that I have a question, but again, I'll, I'll work with you on that.
Any additional sidewalks or roads? We want that input so we can focus on putting it in the CTP.
Really interesting to hear about.
Thank you, Dominic.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here tonight. Janet, we appreciate you being here tonight too. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we move along to item number seven, which is recognition of personnel, and we'll call on Chief Waters at this time.
I'd like to introduce to you tonight, thank you for allowing us to do this, Mayor and Council, new hire for our department, Mr. Gregory Samuel Stone, Jr. He has a few words he would like to say to you guys, actually.
I spent most of my childhood living on Fort Bragg until my, my family moved to Richmond County. I graduated from Richmond Senior High School in 2009. I attended RCC, working towards a criminal justice degree that I still plan on completing. I enrolled into the BLET program and graduated on July 28th of this year. I, I have always loved this community and look forward to working with y'all to make it a better and safer place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Britt, we're glad to have you with us. Thank you. At this time, we'll move along to old business. The next item on the agenda is item number eight, which is Animal Control Ordinance Update. And the, if you've had opportunity to read it, and we will let Mr. Abernathy in.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. After the last council meeting, I updated the animal control ordinance that was passed at the last meeting to basically allow for the board to appoint whomever it chooses to the Animal Control Review Committee without having to update the ordinance itself. So, for example, if you appointed someone today or next month, you wouldn't have to update the ordinance to do so. That provides a little bit more flexibility, and it basically, it strikes through the section that stated that the manager and the police chief would serve as the Animal Control Review Board, and it states that the Animal Control Review Board, established by the council in accordance with the appropriate general statutes, are appointed and removed by the council, and any citizen whose animal is impounded for being determined potentially dangerous may file a written appeal under the conditions expressed in the statute. So, this allows you to appoint, as time goes on, whomever you choose without having to update the ordinance itself, and that will allow a little bit more flexibility. Yes, sir?
Kind of looked into some other areas that do this same thing, and the board doesn't really have any involvement, you know, with it. I know last time, we kind of wanted the board to have some involvement, but this is an ordinance we put in place, and it's put in place for a reason. And personally, I don't feel we need to change the ordinance to have a board. I think you and the chief are a good enough board, and we, I personally trust you to handle it. It's our ordinance that we're putting in place. So, I mean, I really, I think we just strike, go back to where we were, where you guys make up the board. I don't have an issue with that, and I'll put that motion on the floor if there's someone that wants to second that, pass it along.
Well, I, I agree with Councilman Bowie. I, I don't know why we're changing something that we already have in place in the first place. And in the section one of the Hamlet City Code and Ordinance, as it says, that we already have a review board that consists of the Chief of Police and the City Manager. And I'm sure the Chief of Police can interpret, apply the laws, make proper judgments, and then if it needs to be appealed, I'm sure you, you're very knowledgeable, and we got a city attorney sitting there if there's any questions concerning anything. I, I just don't see any need to change the ordinance to a different review board. My philosophy is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I don't see where it's broke. It's never been an issue before, and I was Chief of Police in Rockingham for almost 30 years, and we had the same situation, and it, it never, it never required a third person or fourth or board. The Chief of Police and the City Manager handled everything. And so, therefore, I'll second the motion by Councilman Bowie that we change nothing and, and keep what we got.
Okay.
And forget this review board stuff.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. McQueen, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I was one that wanted to try to get up some people with the board. I've also talked to some folks that are doing this in other municipalities, jurisdictions. And I think the issue that we would run into if we did change would be not necessarily seeking a board, but it would be getting up with the board whenever there's a need that has come up. And I do like the fact that there would be some independent review outside, but I don't think that it would be something that would be able to be feasible to get these folks to come in and have these meetings in, in a short period of time and that quick turnaround. Also, it's only going to be the review for the, the civil issues with the dogs, nothing to do with the criminal part. And I would agree with Jonathan and Chief Martin that probably, in all fairness to everyone involved, try to get a board that you could get together on a short notice. I mean, everybody here deals with trying to seek board members for other things, and it's, it's difficult. But the chief and yourself, you are here, so I, I would be inclined to go along with what they said, and that would be a little change from my original opinion last month.
Mr. Close, you have a comment?
I was just in the, of the opinion, I thought we were going to put a citizen on the board because, and I agree with Jesse, I mean, yeah, get somebody that could do it, but I think we had somebody from the zoning board that kind of volunteered to be on it, so, but I, I was looking at from the, from the standpoint of the City Manager and the Police Chief both are going to have to make some serious decisions along these lines. And it's going to kind of put them in some awkward positions with these individuals. And that's kind of what I'm looking at, because, you know, dogs and animals are like kids. People love them just like they love their children. So, that was the way I was looking at it. I felt like we needed a board separate of them, so they could kind of be biased on the issue, and these other folks can make the decision. That's the reason I was looking at that one. I mean, it's whatever council wants to do, I'm probably going to vote the opposite direction, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, one of the things that, that I found in here that probably does, helps resolve this a little bit, pull that up where it has a definition of potentially dangerous dog. You know, those three items on there are pretty clear cut, and, you know, it pretty much says it all, and dogs really got to have been in a serious situation in order to have any of those three things there.
Can I say something, Mr. McQueen? Tony, I definitely, I understand kind of where you're coming from, but basically, this is kind of saying that, that an officer would take control or possession of a dog that would be a dangerous animal. And I just, I don't think we have, and I'm speaking of this because I have, I went on a ride alone last week with an officer, and I didn't, I wasn't paying attention, but he happened to go by a house and saw a dog on a, on a chain. And he stopped and backed up, and I asked him, I said, "What are you doing?" He said, "This dog doesn't look right." He said, "It looks sickly." And so, we backed up, and he took a minute to, to actually take the time and look and saw it was just a small dog, nothing was wrong with it. So, I don't think we're going to have an officer just go and take someone's dog. So, I, I mean, I definitely understand, and if they do take one, they're going to take it to Animal Control and/or the shelter, in which the owner has the right to go down and collect it, shelter, so long as it's not a dog that's dangerous or anything like that, they're going to get the dog back. So, really, the only complaint is, is going to be the person that complains that their dog got picked up, probably because it wasn't where it's supposed to be, it wasn't in their yard or something to that nature. And I know dogs get out, they're going to get out, and you're going to have someone complain that it got picked up. But I, I think between our officers, who I, again, I, I know they're not going to just collect a dog, because they don't have time to just collect dogs, and between the chief and between the City Manager, I, I just feel like they could handle it. Where before, I kind of, until I took the time to read it and really understand it, I think that's when I realized that there's no sense in having a, a board to it, that it can kind of, I don't think anything is, regardless if they have to make a, a heavy decision, it's going to lay on somebody else, and unfortunately, I hate for it to lay on a citizen that, it, it may be someone outstanding in the community and makes a decision about an animal, and it kind of comes back to bite them in the community, whereas we all get paid to do this, this is our position. So, that's all I got to add to that.
Thank you. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? One opposed. Get it, man? Okay. Thank you. Okay, item number nine, I would assume that this does not, needs to be deleted, is appointments to the Hamlet Animal Control Review Board based on the prior...
Yeah, it needs to be deleted. It ain't no...
Am I good with that, Mr. Morpheus? Okay, that was, some appointments to Hamlet Animal Control Review Board, that would be Moving along to new business. Item number 10 is consideration of ordinance, 2015-08 ordinance directing the building inspector to remove and demolish property as unfit for human habitation at 109 Spring Street. And what this says basically is, whereas the City Council of the City of Hamlet finds the dwelling described herein as unfit or human habitation under provisions of the Housing Code, and that all the procedures of the City of Hamlet, North Carolina have been complied with, whereas this dwelling should be removed or demolished as directed by the building inspector, and should be placarded by placing their own a notice prohibiting the use for human habitation. Whereas the owner of this dwelling has been given reasonable opportunity to bring the dwelling up to the standards of the Housing Code pursuant to an order issued by the building inspector, and the owner has failed to comply with the lawful order of the building inspector to repair or demolish the property within the time therein described. And whereas General Statute 168-443-5 and Section 5-101 and 5-1 of the Code, the City of Hamlet, North Carolina empower the City of Hamlet to have its inspector to remove or demolish a dwelling when an order of the building has not been complied with. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordained as follows. Section one, the building inspector is hereby authorized and directed to place a placard containing the legend. This building is unfit for human habitation. The use or occupation of this building for human habitation is prohibited and unlawful. On the building located at 109 Spring Street in the City of Hamlet, North Carolina, the building inspector is hereby authorized and directed to proceed to vacate the dwelling of all occupants and to remove or demolish the dwelling, said dwelling being located at 109 Spring Street in the City of Hamlet, North Carolina, and owned by Ronald L. and Deborah Grant, in accordance with the order of the building inspector issued pursuant to Section 5-101 and 5-111 of the Code of the City of Hamlet. As provided by GS 168-446-6, the amount of cost of any removal or demolition caused to be made or done by the inspector pursuant to this article shall be a lien against the real property upon which such cost was incurred. Such lien shall be filed in the office of the City of Tax Collector, and shall have the same priority to be enforced and cost collected as provided in GS 168, Article 10. Upon completion of the required removal or demolition, the building inspector shall sell the materials of the building, of the dwelling and credit proceeds against the cost of removal or demolition. The building inspector shall certify the remaining balance of the tax to the tax collector. If a surplus remains after sale of materials and satisfaction of the cost of removal or demolition, the building inspector shall deposit the surplus in the Superior Court where it shall be secured and dispersed in a manner provided by GS 168-443-5. It shall be unlawful for any person to remove or cause to be removed the placard from any building to which it is affixed. It shall likewise be unlawful for any person to occupy or permit occupancy of any building therein declared to be unfit for human habitation. Use or occupation of any building so posted shall constitute a misdemeanor. This ordinance shall be recorded in the Office of the Registered Deeds of Richmond County and shall be indexed in the name of the property owner and the grantor index, as provided by General Statute 168-445-5. A copy of this ordinance shall be served upon the named, above-named property owner and other persons interested in the same by registered mail or other lawful means. This ordinance shall become effective upon its adoption. The forecourt ordinance shall be adopted the 13th day of October 2015. I have a motion.
So, move.
Got a motion? I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next item, item number 11, is amendment to the city of Hamlet's personnel policy. Mr. Abernathy?
Sir, Mr. Mayor. I have before you one recommended change to the personnel policy. The change falls under the section defining the probationary period of employment. The current policy states, uh, 12 months for all police personnel. We're striking through that, and we're, I, we're adding an additional sentence that states that, um, new rookie officers hired, uh, straight out of BLET with no prior experience will have 12 months like other departments. But officers who are promoted from within the Hamlet Police Department, and officers who are recruited from other agencies with experience, will have a probationary period of six months. Um, when this first got brought to my attention, um, I had the police department reach other, reach out to other agencies, and the other agencies that we were able to get up with, which was, was around six or seven of our nearest neighbors, um, they have this exact same arrangement. 12 months for new, brand-new hires, six months for experienced officers who are recruited, and six months who are officers who are promoted up from, uh, within, uh, from, you know, maybe a regular officer gets promoted up to sergeant. That's, that's a case where the officer would have a six-month probationary period as opposed to the, the 12-month. And, uh, lining ourselves up with our neighbors, uh, will allow us to be more competitive as the officers will be eligible for their probationary period raised, uh, within six months as opposed to 12. And it will help us to, um, it'll help us to recruit and retain good quality officers by shortening their probationary period.
I make a motion that we accept the, the change as stated by the city manager.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Comments? Anybody?
Actually, just something that should've been done a long time ago.
It should have, it, uh, well, I am. All right, got a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number 12, appointments to the Hamlet Planning and Zoning Board. We have two members that, uh, my notes. Currently, the planning and zoning board members, Joey Jernigan and Kim Lindsay's term have or will expire this month, and both have agreed to serve an additional term on this board. There are no other applications on file at this time. The board carries a five-year term. What are your wishes?
So move to reappoint Ms. Lindsay and Mr. Jernigan back to their five-year term.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any comment?
I'd just like to say that I don't think you have two better qualified people to serve on that board. Um, they are both active in the city. I know Joey was on the board for many years.
Right, just both.
Ms. Lindsay's active in other ways. Uh, I, I think it's just a, a perfect fit for that board.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item number 13 is consideration of a memorandum of understanding with Richmond County Emergency Center. All this is, is we approved the, uh, our, uh, cooperation with them to go along with the application to get the grant to build a new comm center, and, which all the agencies will use it. At this time, they have received the, uh, money, and the money is to be used for this, and what they have asked us to do in this memorandum is just state that we understand this and we're still good with it.
So move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Okay, anyone have any comments on it? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also, before you, at this time, we have our monthly approval of submitted tax releases. And, uh, anybody have any questions on those?
I look fine. Move to approve.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, I have a mayoral proclamation for National Hospice-Palliative Care Month. Whereas hospice and palliative care empower people to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones despite serious and life-limiting illness. And whereas hospice and palliative care brings patients and family caregivers the highest quality of care delivered by an interdisciplinary team of skilled professionals that includes physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, spiritual care providers, and others who make the wishes of each patient and family a priority. And whereas, through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training and assistance, and emotional and spiritual support, allowing patients to live fully and make more meaningful moments until the end, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. And whereas each year hospice saves Medicare more than $2 billion by providing solutions for physicians, care to patients, and comfort to families anywhere at any time. And whereas every year, more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. And whereas more than 400,000 trained volunteers contribute 19 million hours of service to hospice programs annually. And whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their healthcare professionals. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Bill Bayless, by virtue of the authority vested in me, the city of Hamlet do hereby proclaim November 2015 as National Hospice-Palliative Care Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand this 13th day of October 2015, and cause my seal to be affixed. Mayor Bill Bayless. Okay, at this time, we'll proceed with item 16, is departmental reports. Uh, Chief Knight? Okay. Please, Chief.
Scott, where we standing? Got the new car, how long before it'll be on the road and serve?
Uh, the new, uh, also, the new Forster truck over there looks good. Looks real good. I understand we got some issues with the other new truck, and the company's gonna make it good for us. That's great. You don't know when it's going back yet, do you? Uh, Mr. Stubbs? Okay.
I'd just like to say, Billy, I appreciate all y'all have done. With all the rain we had, uh, storm drains were in bad shape. Y'all really got out there and addressed that. Um, very, very good job on that. Now, you don't hear that a lot, but without y'all out there taking care of that, people would be wrecking, and it'd be involving the police department, fire department, so thank your crew and everybody down there for a fine job.
Mr. Garner, you have anything for us tonight?
We appreciate what you're doing, Don. Something in the, in the tornado building of, some, some kind of speeder or something? What's that?
Eddie, I had to...
Back in the days when they worked on the tracks?
Oh, okay. I had to look it up, too. I didn't know what it was either.
Yeah, I'm glad he asked, so I didn't have to.
That will, um, that would be a combination of a Hamlet hospital and a nursing school, right? Both 100 years old?
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Thank you, appreciate that. Gail Strickland, you have anything for us tonight? Okay, we appreciate what you do with all the zoning. Thank you. Hey Jill? Uh, Tammy? The only thing missing off of it is, there should've been a telephone number on there for public service. They, they call here and get the number, don't they? Okay. Is that all you got tonight? Okay. Uh, manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We, uh, those maps we pass out, um, you know, we give them to the, the Tourism Development Authority, to the National Railroad Museum, our own depot, just to try to allow folks coming into, into town, or, or citizens to, you know, have a copy and take a look at it. If you want a copy, if anyone wants a copy, they can go to any of those places or to City Hall. I have just a couple announcements. Um, I just wanted to re-announce that the Seaboard Festival will be Saturday, October 30th. It's the last Saturday in October. Um, the committee has requested that I mention this in my report, um, and that is that, uh, they are having several of their, uh, volunteers, their committee members, uh, quote-unquote, retire after this year. Some of their members have done it since 1982, when it first started. Uh, so they are looking for folks to, uh, take the reins and come and volunteer for next year. Um, they meet every Tuesday at 6:00 PM, uh, leading up to, uh, the Seaboard Festival in October. And if you, if anyone is interested in serving, uh, volunteering this year or next year, they're invited to come to one of those meetings, contact the Seaboard Festival Committee, uh, which is, uh, the number is located on our website, so...
That is, no, October the 31st.
Did I say the 30th? You are right. I'm sorry. It's the 31st. Yep, it's, it's the same day as, it's Halloween. Yeah, I apologize. Um, city offices will be closed on November 11th for Veterans Day. Uh, all of our garbage that would normally be collected on Wednesday will be collected on that Thursday, the day after. So anyone, uh, who would ordinarily put their can out that day will just need to put it out, uh, the next day. Our tree lighting ceremony is November 30th at 5:30 PM. Ms. Gail, is that correct? Yep. Anybody is invited, please come.
What was that again?
November 30th at 5:30 PM. It's our tree lighting ceremony, and staff, uh, has already met one or two times, uh, and, uh, started working on that, and, uh, we're really excited. I think we're gonna have a good ceremony this year.
At the pavilion at the depot.
I'm sorry.
At the pavilion at the depot.
Yes, correct. And the Christmas parade is December 10th at 3:30 PM. Um, I've heard some really good things about the parade this year, and I'm really excited, uh, to, uh, see it come to fruition. Um, and the organizers are doing a great job, from what I'm, I'm hearing. I'm hearing really good things. That's all I have to report. With the exception of, um, tomorrow will be my one-year anniversary with the city. Only 29 to go. It's been a really fun year, and I'm really excited to have, uh, several more. And I will be, uh, out of the office at training for the rest of the week, but call, text, or email, and I'll get back to you just as soon as I can. Thank you.
We were very impressed, uh, that he was able to get a scholarship to go to this additional training for city managers, and we appreciate the fact that you're, are taking of that, so everything will be, is a help. And also, I understand that our city clerk is taking some training also, gonna start next spring, am I correct? Okay, thank y'all for doing that. Good to have a good professional staff. Anyone else got anything for the manager? Mr. Morpheus, do you have anything tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll move along, comments from council. Uh, Mr. McQueen?
Uh, just a few things, uh, well, actually, a couple of things. Uh, a couple of months ago, had some of the scouts from Troop 527 come as part of a merit badge requirement. Had one young man that couldn't make it, a couple that couldn't make it, but one young man that couldn't make it that showed up tonight. He's probably gonna kill me, but, uh, if you would just stand up. Edwin, this Edwin Waldo, and he's fulfilling one of his required, requirements for one of his badges that he's working on to attend a city council meeting, so just wanted to let everybody know that he was here.
And we appreciate, we appreciate the fact that Mr. McQueen has taken on an additional job now. He will be the scout master at Troop 527, so thank you for doing that.
Uh, thank you. And, and then also, just would like to, uh, remind all the citizens of Hamlet that before the next, uh, meeting, we will have our municipal election. Encourage everybody to get out and, and vote. Uh, what's the date of that? November 3rd? 3rd. Um, got some very, very good, highly qualified candidates. Look forward to the election in the future. And that's all I have.
Mr. Morris?
I don't have a whole lot. First of all, I'd like to say it's good to see David back. He's been sick, it's good to have him back, and I'd see him doing better. So, I wanted to welcome him back. Uh, I'm glad Jesse recognized Mr. Waldo, uh, because Mr. Waldo is one of my students. So it is good to see him here tonight, and, uh, glad that he could come be with us. Imagine he was surprised when he walked in and saw me sitting up there. And wanted to remind everyone about the, uh, homecoming parade this Friday over in Rockingham. Uh, we're expecting a good parade, so if you get a chance to come, I think it starts at 2:30, uh, over at Rockingham, so come for the homecoming parade over. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Martin?
Uh, just one item. Being on the Hamlet ABC Board, I'm pleased to announce that the city of Hamlet will receive $50,000 from the board, uh, beginning next month, and $10,000 payments for five months. And, uh, the police department, they will receive their $1,000 check next month also.
That's great.
Pretty decent increase.
I think it's $40,000 last year, $41,000.
Oh, good.
Thirty-five before that.
Well, I, I tell you, the manager over there's doing a great job, and the board that we got over there the last several years has made just wonderful progress, and the, the, the whole board should be commended for what they do over there. whole board should be commended for what they do over there. Anything else, sir? Okay, Mr. Bowie?
I think everyone's covered everything that's going on. The one thing I do wanna bring up is Main Street and Hamlet Avenue, I think Mr. Gates and the crew's been down working that area, putting out the fall flowers and all of that. Got some compliments on that, so it looks really good. And we mentioned the hospital and the school of nursing there that's, of course, having their 100-year anniversary celebration, so we got that covered, and of course, all the parades were covered, and voting. So I think that's it.
Always leave, always leave me for last, you've covered everything. And I do have several, I do have several things, and, you know, a lot of times, maybe we don't think about, the City of Hamlet does a lot of great things that really look good that we take on, and such things as the Seaboard Festival, we have the Christmas parade every year, and we have the fair. And we just got through with the fair last week, and of course, it rained, it rained us out on Saturday. But the rest of the week was just fantastic. People came, we've got a ride company now that, this was its third year, and each year we've increased the number of people that come to the fair, and we just did fantastic. But these things wouldn't happen without Billy and his staff to make sure it happens. We were in the mud down there, and of course, he comes in and makes sure that, he gets us out of the mud, and always has a trash truck down there so that we keep the place clean. And anything that the Lions Club asks to get that fair ready down there, they do it. Water Department makes sure the water's turned on, and, you know, that's a signal event. That's the Richmond County Fair that's being held in Hamlet. The parade, HBDA, has been grinding their fingers down to nubs the last several months, getting ready for it. So if you, out there in the public, if you've got anything that you'd like to put in the parade, we need you to contact the parade committee and get hooked up with them, and they'll fix you up on that. The... Other thing was, like I say, was the parade, and we talked about that, talked about the help for the city, and the Seaboard Festival is coming up, and all the Christmas activities that we'll be doing in December. And we just appreciate what everybody does, we too appreciate the interest of the citizens in Hamlet, because that's what makes it happen. And, believe, that's all I've got tonight. At this time, at this time, we need a motion to go into closed session. This closed session is per General Statute 143-318-11, A35, for attorney-client privilege matters and to discuss potential contract with HEMS, and A6 personnel matters, and also A4 to talk about an economic development issue. And I would take a motion at this time.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I need a motion to return to open session.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We didn't make any kind of vote or anything of decisions in the closed session. At this time, I'll take a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.